Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the August 19, 2019 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order. If everyone will please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verchay.
Here.
Barbara Scoler.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marco Colli Petro.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal.
Here.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the August 5 Crest Hill City Council Meeting. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second. We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Colli Petro for the approval of the minutes of the August 5, 2019 Council Meeting. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Upstate.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You also have before you the minutes of the work session held on August 12, 2019. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Scoler, seconded by Alderman Dyke. Questions or comments regards to the minutes of the work session of August 12. Roll call, please.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on with the agenda, we have is our business promotion this evening. We have a special guest, Mr. Antonio Anderson is here from the A's Club, which is located at 1801 Nap Drive. It is the strip mall, which includes Firewater and 12 Handles and Southern Bell and a couple of barber shops in there, so it's a very vibrant strip mall now that we have in the city of Crest Hill. And he is here tonight to promote his new business, which has been in business for about six months now, I assume?
Yes.
Six, seven months?
Officially, six, seven months.
All right, so feel free to tell us some information. Tell the residents who are watching us on television tonight what you are all about.
Well, first of all, good evening, and I would like to thank you for having me this evening. The A's Club is something that was grown from my wife and I, right? We have four kids and one on the way, and we've been to a lot of different party venues, and we found that we were not getting the service that we really wanted. So the A's Club is more of an intimate, private party venue. And we service kids from the ages six months all the way up to 18, but we also do some very unique events. Everything is customized. So, the way I look at it and the way I see it, when you come into the A's Club, we want you to have a new experience. You customize the party the way you want it. You customize the venue the way you want it. I've had a sweet 16, I've hosted a golden 14-year-old birthday party, we've hosted some pinochle events, we've done some things around partnering with some seniors in the area for Alzheimer's. And, I mean, we really, the place is really versatile. And although I call it a kids venue, we don't offer alcohol, so there's no drinking, no smoking, the place is, the place is very clean. We really stress cleanliness and we really stress open and free environment to kind of explore for the children. One unique thing about us that I really like to highlight are our funk coordinators. Everything is interactive. And from what I mean by interactive, basically, your kids will never have a dull moment. Your kids are always moving, they're running, they're jumping. We have some gaming, but we really didn't want the kids to be in front of the screens, but for the kids that like the screens, we have those. But it's really about doing the old fun things that you used to do in gym. Red light, green light, jump rope, hula hoop contests, obstacle courses. And then, of course, if they like to sing, we have karaoke. We also offer gymnastics. And then, because it's called the A's Club, we haven't reached the momentum yet, and that's one of the reasons why I'm here this evening, looking for support from the community, is we really want to start offering various clubs. So, if you have children that like to dance, we want to do a dance club. If you have children that like to sing, we want to do a singing club. If you have kids that want to learn to speak a different language, we want to have a language club. So, all these different activities, the place, once again, is very versatile, and it's not just a Chuck E. Cheese or a Bounce House. It's whatever you want to make the place to be. And we really wanted to have a clubhouse feel. So, what I'm looking from here tonight, and hopefully I can get a copy of the video, is that possible, to get a copy of the video?
We could talk about it.
But, I would like to host an event where the community could come out and kind of tour the place, and, you know, we welcome everyone. And we also have, we want to get to the point where we're doing things for special needs as well. I have a four-year-old daughter, she has Down Syndrome, and a lot of places doesn't really cater to special needs. And that's something that my wife and I really wanted to do. We wanted to make sure we had a safe environment for everyone, and that's why it's called the A's Club, awesome activities for all. And that's the principle behind it. I know when you drive by, if you go in the strip mall, you don't really know what it is. And that was intentional, because we didn't want to make it, we didn't want to put a label on it. We really want people to come in and customize the place. When you come to host an event, we really want you to put your fingerprint on the facility, and that's why it has like a plain look. But, everyone who's had a party or hosted an event, they've had a great time, and, once again, I'm looking for the support of the community. I have, I would say this, I've been there about seven months, and I have not hosted one Crest Hill event. Most of my customers have come from Plainfield, Naperville, and Joliet, and I had a couple from Romeoville. But I'm right here in Crest Hill, and I have not had the support of Crest Hill, so I'm here tonight looking for that support.
Well, hopefully this helps.
Yes.
So, are there hours of operation, or is it just when there is a private party?
Private events only.
Okay.
So, you can call me.
Feel free to give your phone number.
Yes, so the phone number is 815-630-5447. I'll say that again. The phone number is 815-630-5447. And we also have a website. The website is www@theasclub.com. Once again, that's www@theasclub.com.
Okay.
So, questions or?
Well, have you talked to any of the schools in this area?
I've reached out. Actually, some of my funk coordinators come right from Joliet West, which is not too far from here. But, it's been challenging getting through the machine, I would call it, because the schools are trained not to take solicitation. But, I was trying to partner with a few of the high schools in the area to, because we can start employing children from the age of 15 on up. And I figured that, hey, you know, if we can get some of the locals to come and work at the facility, they can actually help spread and talk about some of the things that we're doing. But, once again, most of my workers come from Joliet. I have, I don't have a single worker from Crest Hill. And I really reached out to Crest Hill, and it's a challenge. Getting into the PTO or the PTA, that's a tough group to crack.
Do you offer food?
No, that's part of the customization. You can cater, or we can cater for you, but really, I would prefer that people bring their own food, their own drinks. We sell snacks and things of that nature, but, once again, we really provide the facility the fun. We really want you to come in and kind of tell us what you want. If you want to have a bubble machine, if you want to have, not a petting zoo, that's a little, but if you want to bring in a clown or whatever, that makes it easier for us. We want to just provide the facility and then let you kind of dictate and drive how you want the event to go.
Yeah, and I think, I'll be honest, personally, I mean, I was not exactly sure what you had to offer there. I heard a lot of different scenarios, and you, you know, you spoke about all the ones, and that's not what I've heard it was. So, I think to that point, maybe, you know, hopefully this helps, you know, we can certainly work with you to do a ribbon cutting for a grand opening.
Yes.
Which would certainly, you know, give you some marketing too. You're always welcome to come back here and promote yourself on television as part of our business promotion. We offer through the Herald News, we offer through our Economic Development Department, but we pay 50% of the ad, and it runs like once a month for all the Crest Hill businesses, so maybe you can do some advertisement in there. The Clipper Magazine, I know all the homes in Crest Hill get that one. There's advertisement opportunities in there also. So, I think that maybe there's been some misconceptions of what the A's Club was. I actually thought it was for students that were A-students, to be honest with you.
That too.
Yeah.
That's a club.
Yeah, and, you know, for a place for those youngsters to hang out. So, again, this is not what I thought that the business was that you put in place there, but it's a great concept, and we have nothing like it in Crest Hill, like anything else. It takes a little time to get started, though.
Absolutely. And I appreciate everything that you just suggested, and I will 100% take you up on all of those suggestions.
And I know you spoke with Scott McMaster. He went home, he was not feeling well this afternoon, so he went home early.
Okay.
But, feel free to contact him, or I'll talk with him tomorrow and have him reach back out to you, or we can set up a ribbon cutting through the Chamber of Commerce also. And, again, get some people there, and, yeah, I think, you know, the more advertisement you have, it's better off for you.
Absolutely.
So, people exactly know what type of business you have there.
Do you have information, like handles?
Oh, yes, I do. I can leave them at the.
You know what, sir, if you want to just leave them with Glenn, and we'll make sure they get put out in the foyer from the clerk's office, and then we'll put one on the board too for you.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council or comments?
Well, you might want to try going on, well, The Patch is a good online newspaper to advertise, and WGOL Radio, you might want to try to get on one of those shows and talk about your, that's another good, it's right over here in Crest Hill, and they're usually pretty good about talking to people on their shows.
Well, thank you.
Well, welcome, welcome to the city of Crest Hill, Antonio. You got a great concept there. We will, you know, I hope you're successful for many years to come, the business grows and everything works out for you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right? Okay, thank you. All right, moving back to the agenda, to our city administrator, Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have a number of items for the presentation this evening. The first two are grouped with the Public Works Building. They are resolutions authorizing bid awards. The first is a resolution authorizing a bid award to Sound Incorporated for the Public Works Project's phone system in a total amount of $19,222.62.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verchay to resolution award the bid award to Sound Incorporated in the amount of $19,222.62 for the Public Works Project. Motion would be in order.
You have a motion by Mr. Dyke and seconded by Mr. Verchay.
All right. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay. Okay, I'm sorry. Motion carries. Resolution number is 1051.
Thank you. And the next is a resolution authorizing a bid award to TechLife for the Public Works Project. This is in reference to the IT port, system portion of the Public Works Project in the amount of $17,761.38.
Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion by Alderman Verchay, seconded by Alderman Dyke to award the bid to TechLife for $17,761.38 for the phone contract. Roll call, please.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number is 1052.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and the Public Works Project is on track for the estimated budget amount. Both those awards came in under the targeted budget. The next two items are also related to each other. Those were discussed at the August 12 work session. They are in regards to our utility taxes, both our electric and gas tax, and this would maximize the rates that the city receives under the tax to the 5% rate. The first is an ordinance amending ordinance, amending Chapter 3.18 of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances pertaining to the electric utility tax that is broken down by kilowatt hour and would be the permissible limit under the statute.
Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Kubal. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
No.
Tina Oberlin.
No.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1820.
Thank you. And similarly, the second ordinance is amending Chapter 3.19 of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances pertaining to the municipal utility tax. This would be a 5% on the gas use or consumption in the city of Crest Hill, and both of these increases were necessary to support additional revenues to the city for capital projects and necessary functioning of the city system, so these will be effective in the September billing.
Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Scoler, seconded by Alderman Kubal. Questions or comments regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
No.
Marco Colli Petro.
No.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1821.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is a resolution adopting a property tax rebate form. With that, I will turn it over to our finance supervisor, Ashley Motica, for some opening comments.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Based on our previous discussion at the work session held on August 12, before you, you have a resolution adopting a property tax rebate form. We are hoping that this rebate form will help decrease the amount of unclaimed funds in the future years while also verifying the checks for the rebate program issued to the per act property owners throughout the city. I'd be happy to address any additional questions at this time.
This will be effective for the 2019 tax year payable and 2020 rebate.
And again, this was discussed at the work session held last Monday on August 12. Motion will be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Dyke. Questions or comments regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number is 1053.
Thank you. And the final two items I have this evening are for adoption of the successor collective bargaining agreements with both the Chapter 15 and Chapter 16 Metropolitan Alliance of Police. Those agreements expired May 1 of last year, and just for council's reference, we will be doing a, I apologize, a 0% on the first year, so there will be no retroactive pay, and then we will be doing a 1%, 1.5%, and 2% on the life of that contract through 2021.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke. Questions or comments in regards to the agreement with the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Crest Hill, Chapter 15? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1821. I'm sorry, it'd be 1822, I apologize.
Thank you. And then, identical terms with the percentages for the Chapter 16 map.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert to approve the agreement between the City of Crest Hill and the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Chapter 16. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number 1823.
Thank you, Mayor and council. That was the final agenda item I had this evening. For the public's information, there will be a work session held on August 26. Current topics include the City Hall Police Station Final Site Plan, as well as cannabis regulations within the city. The informational report is on file. I'd be happy to answer any questions this evening.
Any questions of city administrator?
Just one question I had, the last page of the 15, the memorandum of understanding for the K-9.
Yes.
Is that something we're going to be utilizing?
It is a carryover from previous contracts. I know there's always that back and forth discussion with the police department, so we wanted to keep it in there in the event that we go that direction, but.
I know they ask all the time.
They do, and there's no active discussions on it right now.
Just a couple of comments in regards to all the items that were just passed. First, let me talk about the negotiations and the agreements between the city and our police department. And, you know, negotiations sometimes are difficult. I will say these went rather smoothly for, between the city and our two police agencies, which is one for the patrolmen and the other one for the sergeants. So, I just want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to our city administrator, Heather McGuire, to our assistant city administrator, Megan Filara, and to our finance director, Ashley Motica, and also to our attorney, John Kelly, for the hard work that they put in over the last year now in regards to the negotiations. I think this was a fair agreement for both the city and for our police officers for the future. We certainly want to make sure that everything is in order between us and them, and it appears that it is. So, again, I know there's a lot of difficult times sometimes during negotiations, but just thank you for all the hard work, because I think this is a great agreement for both sides here. And at the end of the day, that's what's good.
Also, our police chief is.
And also, our police chief, Ed Clark. Because I know you were involved in a lot of those, and my apologies to you. In regards to the property tax rebate form, it's just a form that we are going to ask our residents to fill out. We've been giving the property tax rebate check back 25% of the municipal portion of your property tax bill. We've been giving that back for six years now to our residents. There's a promise that was made when we passed the sales tax referendum for the increase back in 2012. So, this form will help us save some money going forward. It'll take some monies off of the rolls for the unclaimed. So, again, there's some responsibility that's going to be put on the homeowners and the business owners in the city of Crest Hill to fill this form out. I know that New Lenox has the same form. They offer a rebate check also, just like Crest Hill does. And, you know, we need to have some information here. You need to take some responsibility, fill the form out, get it back to us, and then we will issue the check to you going forward in the future. In regards to the utility tax, I know that's a difficult vote. It's been at 3.5% for the last 10 years. Unfortunately, you know, there's monies that's needed for services to be provided. And I will tell you that with state funding, the city of Crest Hill is getting less money from the local government distribution fund. We're getting less money from motor fuel tax right now. With us being a non-home role community, we have to find other sources that we can raise funds in. And this unfortunately is one of them that we can do. And again, it's been 10 years, services that are, need to be provided, the costs do go up over that time. So, again, almost every other community around us is at 5% also, so it is going to be a slight increase for everybody. Okay? I will, with that, if anybody else has any other questions for city administrator? Okay, thanks, Heather. Moving on, we will go to our Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Tom Meggs. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Several things on the agenda tonight. First is a request to hire off the eligibility list, the next available candidate for a labor position as one exists within Public Works itself. I seek your approval to do.
So moved, as presented. Second.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal for a requisition of candidate for employment for Public Works labor. Questions or comments?
Yes. When will he, he or she actually get notice they're being hired?
I imagine we will probably do that first thing tomorrow, and then start going through the hiring process, and rightly have to wait for that person to get notice that they're currently employed.
Thanks.
Roll call, please.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal. Motion carries.
The next item is a request for permission to notify the next eligible candidate on the list for administrative clerk, as we have a position open there in Public Works as well.
Motion would be in order.
So moved is presented.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Brashay, for a requisition of candidate for employment in the administrative clerk. Questions or comments of the motion? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
John Brashay.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item pertains to an easement agreement for the Rayner Avenue Drainage Project. It's been identified that the current line will be abandoned, and this easement gives us the opportunity to bring a drainage line from a low spot behind 808 Sullivan to Sullivan Court and aid in the drainage of that area as well.
So moved. Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Brashay, for the Rayner Avenue Drainage Project Easement Agreement. Questions or comments of the motion? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
John Brashay.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Finally, is a revised cloverleaf plot of easement. It was determined that the prior easement that was voted on by council several years ago needed some revision and correction, and that has been added to your approval.
Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Scoler, for the revised cloverleaf plot of easement. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Brashay.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That is all I have on the agenda this evening. Happy answering any questions you might have.
And again, all those agenda items were discussed last Monday night at the August 12th work session. Any questions of Public Works? Thanks, Tom. Moving on, Community Development Department. We do not have any agenda items this evening. You have information of reports in your packet. And again, Scott McMaster did go home not feeling well this afternoon, so just hold off if you have any questions in regards to community development. Police Department, our Police Chief Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I have one item on the agenda this evening. I have before you the contract for police services for the annual Lions Club picnic, which is going to be at St. Charles Park. The hours of the services provided will be from 6:30 PM to 10:30 PM, and that don't include a vehicle. And I'm just asking for approval of that contract.
So moved is presented. Second?
We have a motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Cola di Pietro, to accept the police services contract with the Crest Hill Lions Club for the picnic to be held on September 1st. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Brashay.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Upstate.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I do not have anything else for the agenda. I'll entertain any questions.
Questions of the Police Chief? Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Mayor's Report. You have before you an agenda item, the Crest Hill Police Department Car Show Entertainment License Waiver. This is for the Crest Hill Police Department Car Show for Special Olympics, which will be held at Richland Grade School, 1919 Gaylord Road, on September 8th, 2019, from the, between the hours of 1 PM to 5 PM. The main attraction will be the car show. They will also have a band there, The Saints and Sinners, and to raise money for Special Olympics from our police department. So their request is for a waiver of the entertainment license for the band of $50. Motion would be in order.
So moved is presented.
Second? A motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Brashay, for the waiver. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Brashay.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I have no other agenda items. If there's any questions of the Mayor, I'll certainly try to answer them.
Is that the same Saints and Sinners from a while ago, five, nine years? Wow, gotta see that.
They've been there how many years, about five or six now?
I'd say at least three years now.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought it was more than that, though. I know the car show's been there.
Car show's been there for, I think, six years now.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, moving on, City Clerk's Report. Our City Clerk, Vicki Hackney. Good evening, Vicki.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two items on the agenda this evening. The first one is Pat Row, with the President of the Cambridge Crest Homeowners Association, is seeking permission to have a block party on Saturday, September 14th, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. She is requesting to close Carlton Street from the intersection of Gaylord Road and Carlton Street up to 21531 Carlton Street.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Kubal. Questions or comments in regards to the request for the block party? Roll call, please.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
John Brashay.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. And we will notify them and also notify Public Works of that. The second item I have on the agenda is Mark Seepon from 20512 Kingsbrook Drive, is seeking permission to have a block party on Saturday, September 14th, also, from 4 until 11:00 PM. He's requesting to close off 20421 and 20519 Kingsbrook Drive from the intersection of Goryo Drive and Kingsbrook Drive. So moved.
Second?
We have a motion by Alderman Scoler, seconded by Alderman Gazal, for the block party. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Brashay.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Motion carries. And we also notify Public Works and the individual recording. That's all the items that I have this evening. Any questions at Clerk's office, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions of City Clerk? All right, thanks, Vicki.
Thank you, Ray.
Moving on to our City Treasurer's Report. Our Treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Well, good evening, Ray. Good evening, City Council. I don't need a stamp. I don't get any taller when I do. I'd like to report regular and overtime payroll from 7/22/19 through 8/4 of 2019 in the amount of $220,059.16. I do seek your approval on our list of bills, which do that same period totals $503,809.58.
So moved is presented.
Second? Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Scoler, for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Brashay.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to apologize for not being able to provide you with a full monthly report. This will, in all likelihood, be available in two months, or, excuse me, in two weeks to our next regular council meeting. We're having some problems with the integration of the new software, and hope to be back up to speed in one month. No guarantees, but they're working through the issues, so apologize for that. And I'll entertain any questions if you have any, or I'll try to.
Questions of the City Treasurer? All right.
Thank you. Good night.
Great seeing you, too. Moving on, unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda, anybody? New business, anyone? Committee Liaison Reports, anybody? City Council Comments? Positive City Council Comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? We'll begin with Ward 1 this evening. Alderman Dyke. Sir, please, keep your comments to yourself this time.
Oh, I didn't know if you were asking, no, sir.
The City Council will begin with Alderman Dyke.
I just want to remind everyone that kids are going back to school, so be aware of the children out there waiting for buses and that.
Alderman Brashay?
He took my report. I'll agree with him. Well, you didn't tell me that was yours.
Ward 2, Alderman Scoler. Alderman Gazal.
Oh, I wanna, we had a meet at the park last Tuesday. It was a success. I want to thank our Chief, Ed Clark, for hosting it and providing the handsout to the kids. I also want to thank one of the best officers that I've ever seen, I'm working with kids, Officer Brown. He was amazing. We loved him. Thank you, Mark Seeford, as well, and to all the Public Works, Brian Simpinski, for always providing interesting things, like the bubble machine. And I want to thank the resident for coming on, and Mayor, thank you for coming on. And we'll be hosting our second meet at the park Tuesday, the 27th, at 6 o'clock till 7:30, at Renaissance Crossing, the Zauza Homes of Segal Drive. Actually, it was Zauza Drive. That's it, Mayor.
Ward 3, Alderman Oberlin.
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Cola di Pietro.
Nothing at this time.
Ward 4, Alderman Albert.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to just announce a last plug here for the Crest Hill Lions Club Lual Festival that's being held at St. Charles Park on Sunday, September 1st, from noon to 10:00. You know, just like many picnics there, it's an all-day of fun with a vendor fair, kids' area, a reptile show, having a car show, bingo, bands, drinks. We've got Johnny Russell and the Beach Bum Bands, Beach Bum Band that starts at 6 o'clock, so, you know, come on out and have a good time with your neighbors and friends. Thanks.
Alderman Kubal. Nothing to report, Mayor. Okay, moving on. Public comment. I am going to make some comments before I open it up, okay? I am going to make some comments on behalf of the city, and then I'm going to set some ground rules, and then we will invite individuals that would like to speak at the podium. Fair enough. Now, we see a very large crowd here this evening. We welcome you here, okay? But we are certainly going to be professional, and we are going to be respectful. I see all the signs. I am going to tell you and ask for your cooperation that the signs are not raised. You are not here to disrupt the meeting. We will conduct this meeting in a professional and respectful manner, and everybody will be heard that wishes to be heard. So some of my opening comments at first, and the reason that we are all here this evening, because about nine months ago, it was brought to the city's council attention by our engineering firm that the city was in need of an additional well to meet our increasing demands and our increasing growth in this city. So we did our due diligence for the next five months, and we explored all of our options. And in May of 2019, the City of Crest Hill purchased, and we annexed, the two lots, which were about seven tenths of one acre, on Gaylord Road, in the Sunny Land subdivision, to build a new wellhouse and explore all the options that were available to us. Now, as we all know, that the Sunny Land subdivision is not in the City of Crest Hill. It is in unincorporated Will County. And again, we did annex those two lots into the City of Crest Hill. Now, as a city, we will certainly meet all of the EPA requirements, and we will ascertain all of the necessary permits if a wellhouse is built on those two lots. Now, I also understand that in the last couple of weeks, all of the residents in Sunny Land have received a survey, and it was sent to you in regards to your wells. And we also know that there are many individuals that are on private wells, and that some are involved with the Sunny Land system. So we are asking for your cooperation with this survey to help us minimalize any impact that this may have on you. Now, we know why you're here tonight, and we know the concerns that you have. But let me say this right now. We are all adults. We all need to be respectful. Some of the phone calls that have come to the City Hall and the Clerk's office in the last week have been unacceptable, and I will not tolerate that. Our employees don't deserve some of the language that they have heard for the last week. We also received a written letter in the mail today telling anyone that chooses to put a well on their property should rot in hell. I will not tolerate that either. That will stop immediately, or the police... Excuse me, sir. You will have your time to speak. This is my time. If the problem persists, it will be turned over to our Police Department for action. If anybody wants to be disruptive this evening, I'm going to ask the Police Chief to escort you out of the building. Again, we are all adults. Let's be respectful. Now, the surveys were sent to each and every one of you to provide data to us as a city. We need to evaluate what type of wells you have and the possible impact for us to determine our options and to alleviate those impacts on you. We, as a city, would rather have the data before us early enough to evaluate the situation instead of waiting until we construct the wellhouse and then find out the impact that could be on you. We are here to help you. Now, if a wellhouse is built, it will be similar to the wellhouse that is built on Oakland Avenue, which is in a residential neighborhood. I ask that you please take a drive there and see the wellhouse on Oakland Avenue, and how nicely it fits into the residential neighborhood. And to dispel any rumors that are out there, there are no plans to build a water tower on that lot. Again, this survey was meant to help you minimalize the impact. I, as the Mayor, we as the City Council, are asking for your cooperation to fill out the survey. We want to be a good neighbor with you. When all the data is collected from the survey, we will evaluate it. We will put a plan in place. We will have a community meeting, and you'll all be invited to it, that you can ask all the questions and concerns that you may have at that time. Okay? Some of the ground rules before we open it up for public comment. We will be professional tonight. We will be respectful. If you wish to speak, you will go to the podium. The only one that will speak will be the person from the podium. This is not a question-and-answer forum. You can make your comments. We will thank you for your comments. I will not tolerate anyone shouting from the audience, raising your signs, or speaking from the audience. We will have respect for the person that is at the podium. They will be heard. I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. There is a large crowd here tonight. I would also ask, if there is a spokesman, maybe that spokesman or spokeswoman could certainly put everything that needs to be heard through one comment, and I will give you more time if you need it. I would also ask that we don't need everybody to come to the podium and keep saying the same thing. We understand why you're here. We understand the concerns. We certainly want you to be heard if you want to, but we would ask that, you know, there comes a point in time where you can't keep saying the same thing. So we would ask if you keep coming, whoever comes to the podium, tell us something new that we need to hear. Fair enough? With that, you are more than invited, one at a time, to come to the podium, or if there is a spokesman or spokeswoman that would like to come to the podium to speak on behalf of the entire group, you need to come to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional.
Good evening. My name is Justin Barard, and I'm a resident of the Sunny Land subdivision as well.
What is your name again?
Justin Barard.
Okay, Justin.
And first of all, I do want to say that I was very respectful in my email to Mr. Seeford. I did email, and he was very respectful back towards me. So I just want to say that, for the record, that's not everybody in our community, and I was very respectful to Mr. Seeford, and was kind, and he was kind back. So just letting you know. My name is Justin Barard again, and I am a resident of the Sunny Land subdivision. We are very extremely disappointed right now and appalled at the City of Crest Hill and your plans to build this municipal well in our subdivision. This is a very insidious, deceitful act that may deplete our water sources. The majority of our residents rely on private wells as our main source of water. We are a small, working-class community within unincorporated Will County, and we shouldn't have to suffer due to a surrounding municipality. We are angry, we are concerned, and we do fear for the well-being of our family and our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
My name's Joe Hadamich. I am also a resident of Sunny Land subdivision. I live at 2414 Keith Avenue. I don't want the well there. I realized water belongs to everyone, okay?[1609.81] But where that wellhouse is, is not in a good spot. There's flooding concerns there. I also have been working, I've talked to Tom, I've talked to Mark. I've also felt a ton of resistance as far as the city goes, twice. I have FOIA'd the city for information on who owns the right-of-way on Gaylord Road, and I have gotten nothing but a runaround, okay? If this is what it's going to be like with the wellhouse, it's going to be a big problem, okay? You guys own Gaylord Road, correct? All right? So, the right-of-way should be yours. I also understand, after talking to Tom the other day, that there's bushes growing up into Gaylord Roads, okay? I understand it's the residents' responsibility to take care of that parkway, okay? But that parkway is a huge, ginormous dip and ditch. It's dangerous. Do you really want a resident getting in there and cutting there, okay? I also talked to Tom the other day in regards to right by the railroad tracks, not on your side of the street, but on our side of the street, if you want to put it that way, where the weeds have grown so tall that we can't see, okay? If I was a head of public works, I would put a guy in a truck with a weed whacker and go on out there and cut it down so no one got killed. I got, put it in writing and send it to me, okay? That I don't agree with. I'm ready to go out there with a weed whacker myself and cut the stuff down, but I'm not going to because it's not my responsibility. Be responsible when you're looking at this well, okay? There are 298 houses in Sunnyland. The municipal well that services about a third of the neighborhood is already having problems and issues. The Garden Street Water Association, I think they're relatively stable, but if we drop that water table down a foot or two foot, we're losing our water. We lose our water, we lose our homes, okay? You can't live in a house without water. Consider that. The survey that you guys sent out was an invasion to me, myself, personally. I felt it as an invasion because all that information is public knowledge. You guys just want to take the easy route and have us go, "Yeah, my wellhead is six inches in diameter and it's this deep." That's listed at the county, okay? Why does the city of Crest Hill want to know our sewer service? I don't know. I don't think it's the city's responsibility to know whose sewer service we're using. When you guys had the opportunity years ago to accept us into your sewer, you said, "No." So, we're stuck with Joliet, okay? All this is leading up to the feeling that all these people are having is, "We don't trust you guys." There's a trust issue here. I mean, if you were thinking about putting that well there, come out first and say, "Hey, we're running out of water." But no, you guys went the back way, you went the right way, but you went the back way around it so no one knew what was going on, and you bought that land, okay? I don't know how much you paid for that land. I mean, we've heard all different kinds of things. I haven't had a chance to look into it, how much that land actually cost. But it's too much. Whatever you paid for it is too much, okay? When I first talked to Mark about the water issues, he said to me that the main reason that the city looked at Sunnyland was because of a little bug, the Heinz Emerald Dragonfly, okay? Crest Hill only has a small sliver of land that they can actually put a well on, okay? So, they came and got land in our subdivision and got, are going to put this well there, okay? I was also told at that time, "It's going to happen. The well's going to happen, no matter what. The well's going to happen." And I just went, "How is that possible? How can you guys just sink a straw in the ground and suck the water out that belongs to everybody?" And I've been through it before. I went through it in Wesmont years ago at my parents' house. And it's the most horrible feeling to get up in the morning, turn your faucet on, and you don't have water. And it's a major, major problem. We don't have the infrastructure. My folks' house in Wesmont had infrastructure. All we had to do was pay the price to go from the street to the house. Wasn't too expensive. If Crest Hill would drain our aquifer down, I know they're two different aquifers. You guys are going deeper, from what I understand. But if that seal isn't 100% around that casing pipe, water's going to go down to the lower aquifer. Instantly, we're without water. We don't have the infrastructure for a municipal water line in our neighborhood. It would cost millions and millions of dollars to have that done, okay? There's got to be a different place the city of Crest Hill can go to get water. There has to be. I mean, I understand the city's growing. There's a new multi-use, I know, okay, thanks for that. The city's putting in a new multi-use facility on Weber Road. You need more water. The bakery on Division Street, they got a giant straw in there. They're sucking up water left and right. I'm urging you, look somewhere else for water. I have a feeling it's going to really be a problem.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Joe.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Holly Coop, and I too am a resident of Sunnyland. I just had a couple of comments. I was wondering why, with this being such a possible public safety issue, us losing our water, why we were not notified when this plan first began? Number one. Number two, surely with this type of a plan that you've, you know, been looking into, you have already done your homework as far as the way that it will impact our subdivision. Also, you mentioned Oakland Avenue well. My question is, does that subdivision, are they on wells or are they city water? And lastly, I would just like to really stress to you the problem with those weeds on the corner of Emlong and Gaylord by the railroad tracks. You cannot pull out safely. We all have children driving, as I'm sure you do too. The corner of Poplar and Gaylord, extremely dangerous as well. If you own Gaylord Road, right along the street there, those weeds should be taken care of. I'm sure none of you want on your heads a very dangerous situation if somebody were to get killed. So, I would urge you to please send someone out and take a look. Go down Emlong Street, try to pull out onto Gaylord Road. Go down Poplar Street, try to pull out onto Gaylord Road. And then make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next?
I'm Clara Snyder. I live in Sunnyland. I work two jobs, one of which is in the city of Crest Hill to afford the mortgage on my house. And you say you know our concerns, but I don't think you really understand our concerns because if you drain our wells, I can't afford to dig a deeper well. I can't afford to move. I'm barely keeping the house as it is because I'm trying. So, this last winter, my water froze, so I didn't have water from the well for like four days. I don't understand why you can't build a well in your own city, why you had to come to ours without any kind of notice or seeming concern for the residents that live there and try and survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Clara. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Frank Ontures. I'm a resident of Sunnyland. I live at 2307 Gaylord Road on the north end. I also am in the association that has a single well on the north end. Well, I guess I can make this as a question. You stated that the survey was put out, mailed out to everyone in Sunnyland. I never received it. I was wondering if it was, the survey was mailed out only to the private well owners and not the people who are on the association?
And this is a public comment for you to make, sir.
Okay. And just that I have not received it, and I don't know if any of my neighbors on the association have received that. The reason I'm concerned is that, I've lived there for 30 years. We have been directly impacted over those 30 years by water, stormwater, that comes from six corners. We're one of the first houses that receives storm weather, no, stormwater that comes from you. We've had a project recently that tried to alleviate that. I have a big ditch that cut my backyard in half because they had to angle the ditch. They never put pipes in. But that's your stormwater that comes, you know, that's a different issue with Will County stormwater management. But they spent a lot of money, there was a lot of federal money involved in that. We never, never got what we were supposed to get out of that. I still flood, you know, that's another issue altogether. But that, I see that water coming from the commercial area around six corners whenever there's any rain. The front yard, every time there's any kind of a rain, an inch or more, I've got water that stands in my front yard until it dries up. The ditches that they put in my property are constantly wet. You cannot cut the grass while the grass is wet. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Frank.
Hello, my name is James Lowery. I live at 2410 Chestnut Street, so I will be right down the street from the well. My concern is that you claim you want to be a good neighbor to us, but up until two weeks ago when the surveys came out, this is the first we're hearing of it, why weren't we reached out previously? The other concern is, obviously, this is a public hearing and you don't want to answer questions. Do you guys plan on having another hearing where we can get information straight from the horse's mouth? And you don't have to worry about us hearing rumors or depths and everything because right now, we don't have all the information, what you plan on doing. So, are you guys planning on having a hearing to answer all our questions and before this project goes? Do you guys have a contingency if you do dry up our wells?
Is that it?
That's pretty much it.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Lisa Rubenacker. I live at Poplar and Gaylord. Those weeds really are a problem if you're trying to leave and turn onto Gaylord. If this well dries up our water, it's 298 houses that it will affect. And to us, that's a really big deal because we are a pretty tight community, as you can tell that we all showed up here tonight. No one's trying to be disrespectful, but you could have let us know before two weeks ago with the survey. That's public information that you could have looked up.
Thank you. Sir? Either one?
My name's Andrew Escavell. I live in the very corner, right next to Route 30 and various other intersections. I know you're not answering questions about anything, and that's okay, but what I wanted to do was hopefully provide a little bit of clarification on our end as to why anyone had received any sort of messages that were vulgar and inappropriate. I don't speak for them. I don't want to make it sound like I'm justifying anything that they've said in an appropriate manner, but what I do want to do is help you all understand the reason why some people feel so frustrated about something like this and why tensions are so high. I would never condone negative language like that to anyone. I agree with your philosophy that we should all be very professional about this, but one thing that your city might not be aware of involving other cities, Sunnyland is really in the middle of like three different areas between Plainfield, Crest Hill, and Joliet. And as of the last few months, we have been bombarded by so many different plans that immediately affect our area where it seems to be the beneficiary of those plans has not taken into consideration how it's going to affect us. And particularly with water, we've been having some problems. There was a plan that, a plan that they wanted to build condominiums right along the street behind like the Autozone and such, but there was a lot of information, information to suggest that the 17-year-old data that they were working with was going to cause flooding to a lot of the buildings behind us, but that really wasn't their concern. Their basic response was, "Well, that's not our problem if your houses flood because of our new buildings and the way we dispose the water." And now, we're here again with another situation involving our water where, this one's a bit more extreme. This is, this is a matter of, well, we're not going to have anything to drink. Now, I understand that theoretically we could connect up to the city, but that's very expensive. We're very used to cleaning and drinking our own water and using what we have. And, I mean, as you can see, the Sunnyland bands together when there's a problem. We try to do what we can, and I understand, I'm probably part of the younger generation that's in Sunnyland. I don't plan on moving. I plan on being where I'm at for as long as I can. I know there's people that have been here for longer than I've been alive, and I've listened to their stories and heard what they had to say, and it's heartbreaking. And I just want to make sure everyone's aware that this problem isn't just going to affect some people in the immediate right now. This is something that can affect us long-term, you know? I'm, I myself am disabled, you know? I don't have the kind of money to go towards building new infrastructure on my own property to handle the changes that may occur. I don't have the money to move. I have the money for basic living expenses, but I think a lot of us are in the situation here in Sunnyland where we just don't have the ability to adapt to these drastic changes that we really weren't made aware of. And I don't want you to think of us as monsters for the few people that may have said some inappropriate things. Certainly, those things should have been said. And, but I want you to know where that frustration comes from. I just want to make it known that we've, we're a community that's been going through a lot, and I hope you can understand our point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Anybody?
Hi, Vern Coop, 2417 Con Street. We own several houses out in that community. One of the things is with the wells is they're old wells, and they're all run probably between 100 and 160 feet in depth. Now, the wellheads, the pumps themselves are set at roughly probably 60 to 80, but below that now, these wells are so old, all this stuff is silted in. I've got two houses, if we were to lower the well, the pumps, they'd have to be blown out. You know, that's cost of a couple of grand. And all we're asking for, I don't care what you build, you know, but I like to see, is a study done and see if it is actually going to affect us there? If it is, what can be done to mitigate it? You know, to say, "Hey, you know, we'll take care of you." You know, that's more or less what we're looking at. And I don't think anybody here would object as long as, you know, you guys are able to show, you know, on paper and doing a proper survey. So, and we are, I'm talking with lawyers tomorrow, so it's probably going to get a little, you know, nastier as it goes, but we don't want it to go that way. So, whatever you guys can do to be good neighbors would be appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Rayan DeCato. I live at 358 Bloss Street in Sunnyland neighborhood. I'm actually a Crest Hill resident because I'm, my mailing address is Crest Hill, but I'm in the Sunnyland part of it. I think you all understand where we're coming from. We're afraid you're going to run out, you're going to suck all the water out of the ground. We're not going to have nothing. 298 people ain't going to have any water, and we all feel like we're being left out of the loop. So, naturally, well is our biggest concern, and they're talking about the weeds. Another thing we have because of the industrial park, you might not realize it, you're getting semi-traffic down Gaylord Road. I've counted eight of them in 30 days. Four, six of them came down Gaylord Road. Two of them cut through from Route 30 on Flower Street to get to Gaylord Road. I know there's a five-ton limit on that road, and truck drivers go by GPS, and a lot of times, the GPS just tells them, "Go this way," and they don't know it's not a truck route. But it's something you might want to consider, maybe putting a no-truck sign up or something to keep them off Gaylord Road unless that's your intention to let them go that way. They do come through occasionally. I'm sure they're doing it by mistake, but that road can't handle that kind of weight, and that's just another problem in our subdivision that I wanted to make you aware of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I know you. How you doing?
Good.
Ray Archuleta, 2422 Garden Street. Now, just basically, I'm just going to be upfront and to the point here. Everyone here in Crest Hill, Sunnyland, we've had the wool pull over our eyes, okay? It's going to happen. They're going to go forward with their plans. I guarantee that. Two, they're going to suck us dry. That's going to happen. Three, this is an opportunity for revenue. Don't, don't, don't fool you. This is income for the city of Crest Hill. What they're going to do is they're going to suck you into their network after we go dry. They're going to have to pay to connect to their network. They're going to charge you monetarily, a fee, monthly or quarterly, okay? It's going to be much more than what you're paying now. Okay? That's going to happen, guaranteed. And next thing they're going to do, they're going to get you for taxation. Once they get you in the network, they're going to suck you in again. That's how it works. That's how the system works. Don't play us as fools. I'm sure you're not a fool, and neither are you or any of you here because you all were elected by the people of your own community. So, if you want to suck us dry, feel free to do so. Just know that we can vote you out. That's our business. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Mick, is it about this issue?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Mike Schwab, Crest Acres. I am a citizen of the city of Crest Hill. And what I've become aware of here tonight, you guys are involved in a high-stakes poker game with these people. And I guess if I was in their shoes, I wouldn't feel real comfortable either, because, I mean, I don't know what all's been studied, and, but hopefully, the impact on these wells has been part of that study. So there again, as a citizen of the city of Crest Hill, I oppose this vehemently. I'm going to recommend that to my two aldermen and woman, how I feel. And I'm ready to go out door-to-door with a petition and let the people know what this city is going to do to these people. I'm not saying you're going to do anything and, and, and hurt them, but the thing is, nobody can predict what's going to happen in the future. And so like I say, you guys are playing a high-stake poker game with these people's lives, and I think it's wrong. I just can't believe that we can't find another place in this city to dig a well. So thank you.
Anybody else?
Joe, you know, I'm a citizen of Crest Hill, and I own a house in Sunnyland. Just a neutral technical information, we had a drought probably in 2013, and a lot of wells went dry. Mine included, mine was an 80-foot well. I had to go down to 140 feet. The community on the south end, that, they had to drill another 20 or 40 feet. And just letting you know. And it's just coincidence, I'm the one that granted the, the, what's that thing for the...
Easement.
Yeah, granted the easement for Sullivan Port, for the drainage, rainwater project.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Anybody else? Last call. Anybody else would like to address the city council? Okay. Again, I think that everyone was heard. Again, I want to reiterate, I'm asking for your cooperation with the survey to help us evaluate what needs to be done, okay? When we evaluate it, put a plan together, we will have a community meeting that you're all invited to. We will have all the responsible parties to answer the questions. I'll be honest with you, I don't know the answers right now. I don't know if anyone in the city council knows the answers right now. That is the reason we need to know the surveys that you received in regards to your wells. If there is somebody that will be a contact person, if you could please see myself after the meeting, that we can have contact information. Since none of you actually live in the city of Crest Hill, we do not have your information. So if there's someone that we can reach out to in order to notify you when a community meeting will be held, that would be great. Fair enough. So if somebody wants to step forward after the meeting and give us that information, and then we're going to count on you to disseminate it when we do have the community meeting Is there a need for an executive, well, let me say this. First of all, thank you for your professionalism. Thank you for your respect. I would ask that if you know of the people that have been making the phone calls and writing the letters, if you'd please ask them to cease. We can handle this as all adults and professionally. So again, thank you for your cooperation tonight. I know tensions are high. I know there's a lot of concerns. Whether you believe it or not, we wish to be a good neighbor. We want to work with you. Now, I've seen the shrugs and everything else. I've been sitting up here a long time. There's other people that have been sitting up here a long time. This is not our first rodeo, where we have a roomful of people that are against us or what we want to do. We will work through this. We will find an amiable solution to the problem, and we will move forward. So thanks for your cooperation. To our city administrators, are there a need for an executive session?
No, there's not, Mayor.
Motion adjourned, Mayor.
We have a motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Frischek. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Cooball.
Yes.
Nate Elbert.
Yes.
Marco Colubio-Patro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Wadi Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
John Frischek.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:16 PM. Thank you and good evening.